I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting to order for Monday, July 17th, 2023. At this time, we ask that our county manager, Ms. Sharon Griffin, lead us in the invocation, followed by Ms. Carrie Sanders for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you and good evening, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, be with the Commissioners in their deliberations and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on tonight's agenda. We pray for our military and first responders who continue to serve our country with tremendous courage, commitment, and sacrifice. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here tonight, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to acknowledge the elected officials here with us this evening. If I missed someone, please raise your hand. Right now, I see that we have Alderman Rick Grant from North Topsail Beach here with us this evening. Glad to have him as always. Our Sheriff Chris Thomas here as well. Do we have any others that I did not see walk in this evening? Fantastic. Thank you for being here tonight. We ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited, no more than five minutes, and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner Comment Period on the agenda. At this time, I ask for a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Our agenda has been adopted. This time, we move to the approval of the items on the consent agenda. We have a motion to accept-
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. At this time, we'll turn this over to Ms. Griffin, and we'll start with public comment.
Thank you so much, Chairman Foster and Commissioners. This evening, for our general public comment period, we do have two citizens who have signed up to speak. I would remind the public who has signed up to speak tonight that you will be called in the order that you are signed up. You have exactly five minutes. Please take your seat at the conclusion of that five-minute period. You may not share your time with anyone. We do ask that you address the Board as a whole and not any one Commissioner, and please be civil in your manner of speaking. We also ask, as you come to the podium, just in case I mispronounce names, that you repeat your name and address for the clerk. Thank you. Our first speaker this evening for public comment period is Alderman Rick Grant, 262 Seadune Court.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak, and I'll be brief because you've got a heavy agenda. It's really just to thank you all for what you've been doing for the town and give you just a couple of quick updates. The sprigs are in at the beach access. It looks very good, and thank you for working on that. Also, if you remember, last year, we had the Oceans, the, for those of you who know Ocean City is part of our town, but it was the first African-American thing there. You guys helped us out with some things. All the signage is up. The town received an award for that, and so it looks really great. It's part of the trail that's out there. And just in general, thank you for everything that you do with the town, and we especially thank you. I know that you and our town manager work very well together. So this is just to thank you all for what you've done for the town and continue to work together.
I kept it under a minute.
Thank you so much, Alderman Grant. Our next public comment speaker is Mr. Al Carpenter of 603 Blue Diamond Court.
I'll see if I can beat that. Al Carpenter, 603 Blue Diamond Court, Jacksonville, North Carolina. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much. Tonight, I'm here, I'm breaking out of my shell. I'm the Onslow County Republican Men's Club. Most of you know me as Lisa's husband. So the reason that we're here tonight is that the Onslow Republican Men's Club and Women's Club is putting on a First Responders Appreciation Day. It'll be this Saturday, the 22nd. It will be held at 817 Court Street in Jacksonville. This is for all the first responders of Onslow County, all five municipalities, to include some of our guys that's on the military. We have spoke to the firemen and some of the military police and also the NCIS agents there for them to come out and enjoy with their families. Again, this is a free meal. It's nothing really special. It's just a cheeseburger, hot dogs, chips. It's basically a time to get together that we, as Republicans in this county, wanted to show appreciation for our first responders. Also, we will have Congressional Congressman Greg Murphy there for the few other elected officials that will be speaking to their constituents. So we invite the Board to show up between 10:00 and 1:00. We also invite the county, even if you're not a first responder, please show up and show your support. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. That concludes our public comment period this evening. Chairman?
Thank you very much. We have a busy next little bit for a few public hearings. Ms. Griffin, if you will go ahead and get us started on the public hearings for this evening.
Thank you so much. This evening, Commissioners, we do have four public hearings scheduled, and we do have some folks that have signed up to speak at each of these, so we're going to get started. Our first is P R E Z 2023-9, Public Hearing on the Anderson Rezoning. And at this time, I'd like to welcome our new Planning and Development Director, Carter Metcalf, who will provide our staff introduction.
Good evening, Chairman and County Commissioners. Our first request this morning will be P R E Z 2023 000 number nine. Brief overview of the request is to change from Highway Business, or H B, to Rural Agriculture, or R A. The applicant and owner are the same, Mr. James Anderson, and there's three properties that are the subject of this rezoning. It's located off of U S 17, even though none of the property actually has frontage on it. The total area is 7.77 acres. To continue the overview, the property is currently vacant and forested. There's a 12-inch unwasse water line along U S 17, and an 8-inch unwasse water line that goes along Pine Hollow Road, which is a nearby residential development. And the area is served by individual septic systems. Holly Ridge is the responding fire district, fire department for the area with an ISR rating of five. And then U S 17, our most recent trip count is from 2021, which is 24,000 trips, again with an estimated capacity of 49,000, so way under capacity there. Here's the three properties. And you can see the highway business there is in the blue, military zoning there is across Wilmington Highway, and then the R A is that bright green there immediately adjacent. So now to compare the districts, current zoning is highway business. The purpose of that district is to accommodate regional-scale commercial uses, foster economic development, and especially along our major highway corridors. And again, the key part of that is where sufficient transportation and utility infrastructure allow. Now, the proposed zoning district has a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, while highway business has none, and the purpose is to maintain a rural development pattern, preserving that agricultural character and heritage of the county while allowing for limited low-density single-family and limited commercial development. So the comprehensive plan details this as medium-density residential, and this category would provide for medium-density single-family as well as planned multifamily development with some limited commercial. So to look at this on the map, you see the whole area is medium-density residential. Now, discussing the reasonableness in the public interest can be considered reasonable due to the fact it's situated adjacent to R A, and this request is supported by five policies in the comprehensive plan. Could be viewed as unreasonable because R A, or Rural Agriculture, is a low density. The comprehensive plan calls for a medium density. Now, to note, though, it's currently commercial, so transitioning from commercial to residential would actually make it more compliant with the comprehensive plan than it currently is. So really, the only reason why it'd be unreasonable would be because the density would be different, but still would be transitioning from commercial to residential. So on May 4th, it went before the Onslow County Planning Board. One citizen spoke in favor of it, and it passed unanimously by our board. A briefly look at the aerial of the property, you can see the three subject properties there. See there as well also Mr. Anderson's residence between those properties and the highway. And then a brief look, you can see what it looks like from the road. You can see his driveway there. It's pretty sheltered by the trees, and then behind that's his residence, and behind that would be the subject properties. So tonight, as respectfully requested, that the Board of Commissioners would adopt a statement of consistency, would consider the rezoning for approval or denial, and then authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary appropriate documents. I send the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. At this time, I will open the public hearing for the Anderson rezoning, and we have one citizen who has signed up to speak, and it is our applicant, I believe, Mr. Jim Anderson of 8537 Wilmington Highway, Holly Ridge.
Good evening, Commissioners. I really don't have anything to speak, just if you have any questions for me.
Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson. If you'll take a seat on the front row. They will ask you questions when it's their turn to consider this matter. Thank you so much. I'll make one call to the audience for the Anderson rezoning. Seeing no one, I will now close that public hearing, and at this time, this is available for Commissioner discussion.
Motion to approve.
In a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next item is P R E Z 2023-00013, our public hearing on the Vista K rezoning. And again, I turn it over to Mr. Carter Metcalf.
And with our next item, as Ms. Griffin said, the Vista K rezoning request. So an overview of this one is change from Rural Agriculture to Residential 15, or R 15 for short. The applicant is John L. Pearson Associates, and the property owner is the Beaver Creek Investors Incorporated. There's one subject parcel, and it's totaling in 100.15 acres. It's located at the intersection of Bear Creek Road and Vista K Drive. To continue the overview, it's vacant, partially forested, partially cleared, has a 6-inch unwasse water line there along Bear Creek Road, and the area is served by individual septic. The fire district is northeast Onslow with an ISR rating of four, and our most recent traffic counts along Bear Creek come from 2016, so they are older, but had a 4,700 trip count with an estimated capacity of 13,000. For the research in that area, most of the trip counts in that area are older. Here's the zoning map. You can see that Vista K Drive actually cuts the property. The majority of it is there to the west, while a portion of it is there along the east side. Proposal again would be from R A to R 15. The immediate residential development to the south is R 15. See across Bear Creek Road is R 20, and then as well, even further south, you can see the R 20 there along the water. So the current zoning is R A, 20,000 square feet minimum lot size. The purpose is to maintain that rural development pattern, preserving that agricultural character and heritage of the county. And the proposal is now for R 15 with a minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet to accommodate moderate-density single-family primarily in suburban or growing suburban areas of the county that have access to adequate utility and transportation infrastructure. So the comprehensive plan identifies most of the property as medium-density residential to provide for a medium-density residential, planned multifamily developments, and limited commercial nodes. R 15 is a corresponding zoning district to medium-density residential, even though it does not allow for multifamily. Now, part of the property is in the conservation, future land use category. You can see identified there in the lighter blue, and that was really for the floodplains. The goal was protection of that environmentally sensitive area. That's the intent of that category. So as we look at reasonable in the public interest, it could be considered reasonable due to the fact it's located near those other adjacent residential developments that have similar or less tense zoning, supported by four policies in the comprehensive plan. Can also be considered unreasonable because it's near some environmentally sensitive areas as well. And that's two policies in the comprehensive plan spoke against it. June 1st was when this went before the Onslow County Planning Board, was voted unanimously recommending approval of the request, and there were two citizens that spoke against it. Their concerns were focused along traffic along Bear Creek and as well the effects that increasing development that area would have on existing infrastructure such as roads and utilities, and as well concerns for wildlife habitat. Look at the property from the aerials. You can see a portion of it is cleared in our agricultural fields, while a portion of it remains wooded. We do not have a wetlands delineation at this time. And you can see the property there. There's the field and the woods and the required zoning sign that we had to post. And so, to conclude, this time is respectfully requested, the Board of Commissioners would adopt a statement of consistency, and then as well, consider the zoning map amendment and authorize the Chairman to sign necessary documents.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. At this time, I will open the public hearing for the Vista K rezoning. That is P R E Z 2023-13, and we do have five citizens who have signed up to speak this evening. Our first citizen speaker is Ms. Pamela Downey, 118 Harbor Drive in Hubert.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the sensitivity of this area, both to environment, schools, shopping, grocery stores, most of all, the inundation of water that has come down from this development site, proposed development site that you're trying to, or they're trying to change over to put homes up. The water that comes down that road during Hurricane Florence, we had a disaster over on Magnolia. There is a large pond on the corner of Harbor Drive and Vista K Drive, and that pond becomes very active when there's a great deal of water. Hurricane Florence was a good example. Two homes on Magnolia had flooded all the way up to their kitchen counters. What they went and did was, they went and got pumps, pumped the water through an empty field onto Harbor Drive where I live, and all the homes down there, their drain ditches were filled up with sewage. I called the Environment, Environmental Protection Agency in Jacksonville. They came out. The stench was overbearing. I think if you take these trees away, you're going to have a large problem. This is wetlands. They're all wetlands out there. It's a very, very sensitive environment. I have a copy of the covenants of Vista K Village that indicates some of what I'm talking about. Also, as far as the wildlife, yes, there is a bird, or a few birds out there. One that I have gotten pictures of from various different people in our development, and that would be the, it's called the, it's a woodpecker. And it's called the palated woodpecker, which is not endangered, but it is being protected, and a great deal are out there in that area. The properties are existing right now in Vista K are either on a half acre or close to a half acre or a full acre. Quarter acre lots with all the houses that they're proposing to put out there, it's going to be a disaster. It's going to ruin our development. It's going to start looking like the rundown areas of Sandridge Drive over there, not too far away. I am very against this, and I don't think it's going to be good, good for the environment or anything else. We have a lot of money, all these people have a lot of money invested in Vista K. We value our homes and our property, and putting all these homes in the beginning of Vista K, you know, I would like to see some proof of letters from the different managements. Stormwater management, is there, did anybody go out there from that department to look at the property? The Division of Water Quality, the Department of Environmental Natural Resources, the North Carolina Sedimentation and Erosion Permits? I mean, I don't see how any of these agencies that would go out there to, they would see that this is sensitive, and I think it's going to be a disaster. There are other properties in the area that are much more desirable for this type of zoning, but R 15, quarter acres with all the homes that they're proposing to put out, I think we're going to have a problem, a big problem. I was there for hurricane, the last hurricane, and I'll tell you what, I couldn't leave because I had a daughter that was disabled, and I had to stay there. But the inundation of water, I lived near the intercoastal waterway from Bear Creek Road all the way down to the ICW, the water just flowed. And if you're going to take all these trees away now, we're going to have a problem that you never have seen in that area of the county. I mean, I think it's wrong. I really do. I think there should be more examination of all this. This is not right. So there are other people here. I think they feel the same way.
Thank you so much, Ms. Downey. Our next speaker is Mr. John Pierce, who I believe is the applicant, 465 Johnson Boulevard.
John Pearson is 405. I can't write good. That's why. Good afternoon. I represent the developers for this piece of property, and I assure you, we got to get all the environmental permits, and our zoning that we're proposing is contiguous to the existing zone right adjoining this piece of property. And as far as the wetland issue, we have had to do wetlands delineated, and it's processed, already been sent to the Corps for their visit. And I assure you, I've got to receive all the permits for erosion control, stormwater, water permits, NCDR. I've got to get a stormwater permit, and all the other permits will be in concurrence, and I think it's the highest and best use for the property. There'll be lots that's going to probably be, probably up to 30,000 square feet, but our smallest one in general will be 15,000 square feet. We've had the property perked, and it's real good soils on it. As you can see, there's a lot of fields, and there is a finger that goes up there, and there's wetlands and a little flood area, and of course, we'll have a buffer from that, and we're going to be well off of that, and we do, and to comply with all the environmental regulations, I've got to have all the permits for a procedure, as well as county planning improvement. And they, they will require me that I get all those permits as a condition. And as far as the land use plan, I think it concurs with what our use is, which is medium residential, which equates to R 15. And I'll be here after your public hearing if you've got any questions you want to ask on behalf of the development. Thank you all for being able to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Our next speaker is Ms. Jessica Halfen of 426 Peppermint Drive.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I've lived in a neighborhood for about a year now. I'm stationed at Camp Lejeune. This is going to be my retirement home. My daughter is going to be going to school here at Sandridge. I feel like that the development of these extra properties is going to put a strain definitely on the school system, and we need to value our children's education and not overfill the schools. As far as the traffic is concerned, going into the back gate of base and then going into town, you have two main roads that you can go through, and these roads are already like highly trafficked and miles backed up early in the morning and even in the evening. I know that they're planning on redeveloping the bridge on, I believe it's Bear, not Bear Creek, but it's a two-lane bridge that goes into Swansboro, and that's going to be out for a couple of years, and that's going to put more strain on the roads going back into town and onto base. So those are my main concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Halfen. Our next speaker is Ms. Kimberly Pike of 215 Winter Green Lane.
Good evening. I'm glad to be able to get a chance to speak on behalf of our neighborhood. I know you've heard from the other neighbors about some of these issues, but in our area with the schools, our elementary schools are over capacity. Swansboro Elementary is 130% over capacity, Sandridge is 116%, and Queens Creek is 104. The middle school and high school, they're not over capacity, but they're getting there. We already have other developments going up on Queens Creek, affordable housing, which are supposed to be multifamily homes. So you're adding that to the area plus these 140 homes that you have planned. There's already a bus shortage in Onslow County. They had to combine the middle school and high school two years ago for the buses. That is a big age difference between those kids. And I took my kid off the bus and had to figure out a way to transport him back and forth to school so he did not have to ride with high schoolers as a sixth grader. And then in our development of Vista K Village, on our deeds, and when we bought our house and we were sold, and it is continuing to be told this to new buyers, is that there is boat and RV storage. That boat and RV storage is wetland. It cannot be developed, and we were promised it. That's going to happen to this neighborhood as well. There are wetlands that have not been documented on the new survey, and what I've been told was Morton bought it, and the surveyor is on the board of the prospective land. I don't know how true that is, but that is conflict of interest, in my opinion. I don't know more than that. I know there's two houses. I'm sorry, I'm kind of rambling, so apologize. I'm shaking too. I know there's two houses on Queens Creek Road, not Queens Creek, Goose Creek, that they, when it rains, it rains so much that, well, not rains so much, but their water, their land holds so much water that they have to use stump pumps to drain it every single time. Our properties are backed up to wetlands on Winter Green Lane. There are houses that are off, one of the cul-de-sacs off of Peppermint, that are wetlands. All that water that's going to run from the new development is going to fill in that because it's going to have nowhere to go. It's higher and lower elevation. Them building in there is going to ruin our already degrading roads. When our builders built our neighborhoods, they just pushed over and built roads on top of it. When we called DOT to come fill it, they just fill it in with gravel, and then weeks later, it's filling in again, or like it's sinkhole again. Sorry, I'm trying to get everything in here too. Somebody already spoke about the bridge work. That's going to happen, but they're also planning to widen Queens Creek Road only from almost where the school is to the Dollar General that's there. And that's going to affect traffic flow as well. We're going to be forced to go down 172 or Sandridge, and like she said, traffic there is already horrible in the mornings trying to get to school, and in the afternoon when everybody's coming home. There's only two ways in and two ways out, pretty much. The speed limits, we already, in our neighborhood suffer with speeders. From delivery drivers to even the bus drivers will speed through our neighborhood. It's currently 25 miles an hour. If you put more houses in here, that's going to need to be lowered for the safety of walkers because we don't have sidewalks for our walkers, and there are older people that live in that neighborhood, and they walk their dogs every morning. And I cannot tell you how many times I've almost seen them get hit from speeders. And just like she brought up the bird, that's actually, from what I researched, is on the federal endangered list that woodpeckers- federal endangered list, that woodpecker that she mentioned. Yeah, I think I covered everything I could rambling, so I appreciate your time. And hopefully anybody that I missed anything gets it covered for you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pike. Our final speaker that signed up for the Vista Kay rezoning is Mr. Daniel Bellinger of 414 Peppermint Drive.
Hi, I got questions and will someone answer my questions?
The commissioners can answer the questions after they're able to discuss it when the public hearing is closed.
Okay. I live on 414 Peppermint Drive and there's a natural ditch behind where the neighborhood's going. So when it was Florence or any big storm of rain, it takes all our water and breaks in back to Vista Kay. And if that is blocked from, you know, the new neighborhood, we're all going to eat the water. We're all going to have the water. The water is going to flow down Bay Willow and flood that area because there's three swamps back there. And then what they're not saying, I heard they're going to cut a road through Pepperwood from the new subdivisions, which no one is talking about it. And my road cannot handle heavy dump trucks every day, concrete trucks, you know, it will damage our road. And Vista Kay has been paved two years ago. And all that heavy equipment will bust that road up. And we drive on that road every day. So if our road is damaged, I mean, I see it every day in new subdivisions. I work for utility, I see it. They damage roads, they don't fix it, it's up to us after that, to DOT, well, they just paved our road two years ago. They will, I mean, and it's going to take, what, four years, five years to build 300 homes? That's what they're planning. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of kids, you know, a lot more people on roads, accidents. It will happen. And I mean, there's two exits. I mean, y'all, y'all need to figure something out. It will not work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bellinger. I will make one call to the audience, if there's anyone remaining that would like to speak on Vista Kay, if you would come forward quickly. Okay, thank you. This will be our last speaker. She's going to give her name and address. Come on up, come on up. If you would give your name and address for us, please.
My name's Autumn Sampson. I live on 809 Lavender.
Autumn Sampson, okay. And you said, say the address one more time, I'm sorry.
809 Lavender Court.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mostly just wanted to say what they said. Just wanted to reiterate, like, the Sandridge Road, from what I've heard, is just already, it's already super narrow, it's already hard to drive on. And with the Queens Creek Bridge going down, people have already been super stressed out about trying to get through there because it's a lot. There's houses right on the road, so narrow, the speed limit, people are flying down it. It's already really scary, dump trucks, you know, garbage trucks. And now adding 300 houses, that's maybe 300, at least 300 cars going either through 172 Gate, which is half an hour to get through in the morning, or getting down the Sandridge Road. I mean, it takes me a long time to get down that in the morning. And I just feel like it's going to add a lot of problems to that road. Just Queens Creek already going down, already going to be a problem. Honestly, seeing all these trees being cleared out has made me really sad. I've been seeing a lot more deer, all these animals coming into my yard a lot more, which I mean, I love seeing them because they're wonderful. But I just know that they're being pushed out of their homes and that just has made me kind of sad. And then just with the flooding and stuff, I was wondering, where's all this water going to go when it rains? And then someone had brought up that and I was like, yeah, that, I mean, makes sense because that's where it's all going. Also, I don't know how our fire department is, and like, it's like a volunteer fire and rescue right there by our place. But I don't know how strong and big it is to handle this much more homes. I mean, I'm happy to have more neighbors, but like, I don't know how that, we're going to be able to handle all of that. I mean, yeah. Like I said, the 172 Gate, I wasn't planning on speaking, I'm sorry, I was not prepared. And I have a few other neighbors that wanted to be here tonight, but they had to work. So I just kind of wanted to represent them as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sampson. At this time, I will close the public hearing and this item is available for commissioner conversation and consideration.
Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion, questions?
I had a question. I don't know if this is for Carter or for Mr. Pierce. That area that's shaded in conservation, will those be lots or will that be a buffer through there where it will allow the water to, to move? Or, or will that be lots as well? You're going to try to get those to perk and build on that area?
Those areas are shown in conservation.
Mr. Pierce, give me just a second. We have the motion, but we need to know what that motion, a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, I'm sorry.
Okay, and a second on that?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Pierce, I'm sorry.
That area set aside is shown in conservation is designated as a floodplain area, which we don't want to build and develop in floodplain areas unless you're right on the beach or somewhere because you, out in that area, but that'll be set aside. And also, besides that, it'll be a little bit bigger area because there's a wetland area that runs along right beside that. So those are, have to be preserved. It's not going to be built upon at all.
How, how big of an area does that represent in, in the lightly shaded that we're talking about there?
I would say you're probably looking at a total of probably five acres, somewhere in that area.
Would you also like for Mr. Metcalf to respond to the question?
If he has anything to add, that would be helpful.
So as Mr. Pierce was talking about, with our residential developments, we allow for what's called a PRD, a Planned Residential Development. So there can be some lot sizes that are smaller than 15,000, provided that there are some that are larger. This is typically done in areas that have environmental, you know, sensitivity. Therefore, it allows for those areas that are environmentally sensitive to be protected. And as well as there's been concerns regarding state permitting, as mentioned earlier, part of our ordinance does require that they get permits from Soil and Erosion Control, State Stormwater, DEQ and NCDEAR to regulate all the utilities going in. So that way, the construction process is following all the state guidelines. So if it were to be approved, they will have to get all permits before the county would create any lots.
So how many of these lots will be modified to a smaller number? You said that sometimes that they're allowed a smaller number instead of the 15,000 square foot, right?
Yes. So I think of it because the average still must be 15,000. So every, for one foot down, he goes in one lot, another lot's got to go one foot up.
Okay, got you.
But I thought your original question is, would we, would we be building those floodplain areas and developing in those floodplain areas, which we're not, but they would be, they would be designated as buffer areas that wouldn't, that would not permit building within a floodplain or the wetland areas.
If I could, uh...
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, make some comments. I was, I was out there after Hurricane Florence. It was, it was, it was a bad situation and there was a lot of, lot of water. And I feel for, for the people that live out there. But I see this a little bit different. I, I see this as an opportunity to remedy some of that stormwater issue because if I'm not mistaken, you're going to have to develop ponds to hold stormwater. You're going to have to maintain the stormwater on the property that you're developing, which, which should take some of the water off of some of the other residences out in that area. So I, I see this more as an opportunity to maybe remedy some of those issues. And, and, you know, rezoning is not, failing to rezone this property is not going to stop it from getting developed. It's going to get developed. And, and if that's what the owner wants to do with it, because they can build on that property as it's zoned now. The only difference is, you know, what, what they build there. They might build duplexes if we, you know, if we don't allow their planned, planned development. So I would say, you know, the development's going to happen. Maybe that's unfortunate, but people need houses to live in in Onslow County. And finally, you know, DOT always follows the development. You, you can't get a road built if there's not development already. So as, as difficult as it is to, to struggle with the, with the road issues while things are being developed, you're never going to get the road improved unless there's a need for it, which happens when there's development. So that would be my comments.
Commissioner Bennett, Mr. Price.
I hope that I don't lose my banker.
So to, thank you, to follow up on what Commissioner Bennett was saying, can I ask Mr. Pierce, is that actually true that when you develop something like that, that you have to have retention ponds to handle that water? Is that required?
When in fact, if you do real high density development, you have to be required to do detention ponds. If you opt to do a low density development, which this piece of property could be deemed to be possibly developed as low density development, we still have to design it in such a way that we don't run directly into streams and it would deter the flow, but actually detention ponds, we may, may not have to dig certain ponds. But we do have under the low density stormwater rules, do the best we can to retain the velocity, to slow the velocity down. And we cannot increase the velocity after development, post-development, it's got to be equal pre-development. So we have to control that part of it. That part of it is correct.
And a kind of another related question too. I've had multiple conversations with people who are concerned about the clear cutting that goes on in our county on a pretty regular basis and what the lack of trees does to the amount of water. It increases the volume immensely, even just an inch of rain. So is there any indication that the developer might be doing something that's a little bit more conservative? Or is it pretty typical that they would just go in and take all the trees out?
Well, if you see some of the other developments we've done, we've done one right up the road from it, Queens Creek, called Heron Watch. In areas that we could leave trees, we left trees because I don't want to do any more clearing than what I have to do to maintain a nice yard and deceptive areas and a house. And if we leave, we try to leave buffers all we can because at the end of the day, these lots are going to be sold and it's got to be a nice and it's got to be, it's got to have the curb appeal to help sell a house and it's still got to be that country tight setting. Because we're not, it was quoted at 300 houses, we're not trying to develop 300 houses. We probably, really and truly, I would think my layout is somewhere around 110 maybe to 120 at the most. And I could develop it as it's zoned, but it would be a lot of offsite area and it'd be high densities of safety tanks in certain areas and I want to eliminate the most of that. So where's real parkable and a minimal, there'll be smaller lots, but then some of those lots are going to be 30,000 square feet, some are going to be 20. But probably, the minimum is probably close to 15.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And one more question for Carter. Thank you so much, Mr. Pierce. Carter, so when you are doing your assessment and you came up with these different things that show that they are in line with the current comprehensive plan, do you take into consideration issues like the flooding that was experienced that was mentioned by a couple of homeowners from Florence? Is that something that you look at as well?
So the policies of the comprehensive plan are designed around land use, not necessarily environmental factors, because again, the age of our comprehensive plan. That is something, as we are updating the comprehensive plan to Horizon 2040, we can certainly look at that and make sure that we are creating a resilient community and creating policies that guide us towards resiliency. And that's something we've already been conversational with our consultant on. But nothing for this plan, but in the future plan, yes, we're looking to directly address that issue.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Let me, I'm just going to give you what my take is based on what I'm hearing. Okay, number one, I heard a comment that, you know, it's going to be, the rezoning issue's not a big deal. Rezoning issues are a big deal, especially when it affects our citizens, period, plain and simple. And it's not something, it's boring to a lot of people, but we sit here as commissioners and we have to decide what's best for the citizens. And I heard up here that it's going to get rezoned anyway, despite how we vote on this today. And I don't, I don't buy that answer. I don't like that answer. I don't accept that answer. Because then why are we here, talking about this? So I've been to Bear Creek, I've been to that area. I know you guys butt up to some wetlands. I, I had friends that had homes flooded and, and you're right, the traffic on Bear Creek Road can be very dangerous. I won't even travel on that road at night, to be honest with you, and I try to avoid it. But what's most important here, every time I say something against a rezoning, I'm, I'm banished, I'm bartered that I don't want development in this community, which I do. I want development in this community because we're growing. But I want development in a conservative way that's protective of the, of the citizens and we do it the right way. And I've heard comments about flooding, I've heard comments about the wildlife button up and getting into your yard. Yeah, they may be cute animals, but I don't want a bear coming into my yard for whatever reason. I don't want my street to be flooded. I don't want to add to the existing problem right now to what is ongoing, because apparently there are some problems, whether it be Department of Transportation or whatever it might be. That's a low lying area. And what I also heard was, and I wasn't really, no offense to you, but I really wasn't happy with the answer about certain aspects of the planning in terms of what we can anticipate. It wasn't complete to me. That's no offense to anybody in here. It's just, I'm trying to dissect what I've heard and I'm trying to be rational and trying to think because I represent the citizens and I got to represent the citizens who came up today to speak on behalf of their community. Because you're the people that live there. I don't live there. None of us live there. We don't experience the day-to-day stuff that you see. We don't go on Bear Creek Road every day. We don't have the flooding in our yards as much as you may have or the potholes or anything like that. And like I said, I am for development, but I'm for cautious development. And I don't want to see a community that's already experiencing problems add to their existing problems. Do you understand what I'm trying to say? So I did listen intently to what you had to say. And in my, let's dumb it down for Robin, you know, I listen to everything, I pick and choose. I don't pick and choose, but I pick at certain words and phrases that bother me and I key in on that. And then I have to weigh my objectives. And right now, based on what I'm hearing, and again, I'm not satisfied with the answer personally, and no offense to the planning board, some of the concepts and there's no guarantee. That's the thing, there is no guarantee that you work up that we're going to have a buffer here, we're going to prevent the problems that you're facing now. And quite honestly, I don't want to add to that problem and I'm not going to add to that problem. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, you can call me an anti-developer, whatever you want to call it, but I'm going to vote my conscience and I'm going to be against this rezoning. Thank you.
I had a question. Maybe I didn't hear right, but about this project, I heard that on some projects, they required retention ponds, but I still didn't get the answer, maybe it's just me, as to whether or not this project requires retention ponds. Could you answer that question for me?
Yes, sir. So all, excuse me, all developments in the county are required to have a stormwater permit. And so when you file with the state, you send them their plan and they look at it and they weigh, is it high density or low density? High density, we'll look at, yes, you have to do a stormwater pond and then all stormwater must be mitigated onsite. The low density, which is what we often see with residential developments, they do have to mitigate the flow of the water, but they will usually never have to install a pond. Usually it's some sort of drainage ditches and that sort of thing. So if I heard the applicant correctly, he's intending to do a low density option. Now he could send his plan into the state and the state could look at it and say, I know you're intending to do this, but we're actually going to make you do high density. But that's going to be based off their rules. And there are stormwater engineers that look at every application that comes into NCDEQ. But typically, we see low density stormwater permits, which would not have a pond.
Okay, so that's a no for this project then, unless the state comes back and says, hey, you've got to do the retention ponds, is what I'm understanding, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Typically with this type of residential development and lockout, we would expect a low density permit.
Thank you.
Any, any further questions? Mr. Metcalf, I just, one, one question. Mr. Metcalf, just one question for you. It's going from RA, Residential Agricultural, to R15, Residential 15. If this is not rezoned to R15, development can still occur in RA. What changes when it comes to restrictions and permitting and steps that have to be taken RA compared to R15?
Yes, sir. So the big change would be all lots must have a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet. No and ifs or buts about it. So the developer would have to alter any design submitted to our office to make sure every lot would have minimum 20,000 or above. A subdivision could be developed. The big thing staff would look at would be that 20,000 lot size. All the permits would still have to be filed and they would still go through that process. Additional difference would be other things are permitted in RA that are not permitted in R15. So someone could purchase one of those lots and apply for something outside of a single-family home. That would be the other concern.
Okay. So basically, development will occur whether it's RA or R15 and there, a purchase of a 20,000 square foot lot in RA could become event venues, self-storage, vehicle, boat services, the non-residential, wherein the R15, there's still some things that are there, but it limits those things. So it sounds like there may be potentially more protection, I don't know if that's the right terminology, more protection of the development and what is allowed and what is not allowed. So either way, RA, R15, development can occur, it's just what can be done in each one of those.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Scott? All right, no other questions or discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, like sign?
Nay.
Is that four, three?
I would suggest you poll. I could not tell.
Yeah, if you just show hands, nays.
Nay.
Yes, so it's four to three.
Okay, so the motion passes four to three. Thank you.
Our next, yes, thank you, sir. Our next hearing is PREZ 2023-00014. It will be our public hearing on the Ascar Mohammed rezoning, and I would like to recognize Mr. Metcalf once again.
Our next request, as Ms. Griffin said, is the Ascar Mohammed rezoning, PREZ 2023, number 14. An overview of the request is to change from RA and community business to community business. So the property is currently split zoned between those two districts and the proposal would be make it all community business. Applicant and owner are the same, Jamal Abdal Ascar as well as Temini Medhat Mohammed. And there's one subject piece of property, location is 2060 Blue Creek Road, and the total subject area is 1.49 acres. Existing land uses residential and commercial. There is a single wide mobile home on the property as well as an existing store. There's a six-inch Anwasa water main that goes on the opposite side of Blue Creek Road and is area served by individual septic. Fire service for the area is Southwest, has an IISA rating of three. And the Blue Creek Road, our most recent traffic count comes from 2018, 1,800 trips with an estimated capacity of 13,100. It's an overview of the zoning map. You can see there the small square of light blue, that is the community business, and then the subject property there is in the hashing. Overview of the two districts, RA, 20,000 square feet, purpose is to maintain that rural development pattern, allows for limited non-residential uses as well as single-family, and that could be manufactured homes, stick-built, modular. Community business, there's no minimum lot size and its purpose is to accommodate small-scale retail. And the purpose of that small-scale retail is to serve that local community or neighborhood in the rural area of the county. This district does allow for multifamily, up to 10 dwelling units an acre. So again, proposal is to extend that CB through the whole property. The comprehensive plan identifies this area along Blue Creek as medium-density residential. And this category allows for single-family residents, planned multifamily, as well as limited commercial nodes. You can see here, the whole area there within our map is medium-density residential. Again, this was the previous comprehensive plan as well as identified here. Can be viewed as reasonable due to the fact that this community business would serve that surrounding community, like the current Mini Mart does. There's four comprehensive plan policies that support it. At the same time, can also be viewed as unreasonable because it has the medium-density residential, right? And it's proposed to expand commercial. And the character of the area is residential. This is the only commercial kind of that nearby area. And three policies the comprehensive plan would not support the rezoning. Take a look at the, excuse me, planning board, getting a little ahead of myself. Planning board was on June 1st and voted unanimously to not recommend approval of the rezoning request. Three citizens spoke against the request. Their concerns were focused on vehicular traffic, safety, and again, not being in harmony with the character of the community.
Not being in harmony.
See, overview of the area, within the red box, the right structure is the Mini Mart and then the left structure is a single wide mobile home. See, there's several mobile homes there that get access through the piece of property and as well, a lot of other residences there along Blue Creek. These pictures of the property, so the far left, you see the very edge, that light tan, I believe, that is the single wide mobile home on the property. And then you can see those houses behind that get their access through the property. Then that right picture is the Mini Mart. You can see there's several cars at the time the picture was taken. Can't say every time I went to the property, there were several vehicles present. And our request tonight is again for consideration, adoption of a consistency statement and to authorize the chairman to make the necessary signatures after you make your motions.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for the Ascar Mohammed rezoning, PREZ 2023-14. We do have five citizens who have signed up to address our Board of Commissioners. Our first citizen is Ms. Leela Williams of 119 Beach Tree Lane.
Hi, I'm Leela Williams, 119 Beach Tree Lane. It's maybe a little over a half mile from the store. My grandpa actually started the store when I was a little girl. And when he passed away, my brother ran it for years. After that, my uncle ran it for years. I wanted my turn. I didn't get it. My uncle decided to sell it to Mr. Oscar several years ago. And in that time, I have been blown away at how well he has done with that store, how big of a help it's been to the community. There's several low-income residences there, several trailer parks, a lot of older residents. I have witnessed myself, Mr. Oscar, who's been a friend, people that can't get out and go in and shop. They can pull up, they can call. He'll bring stuff out to them. He employs people that live in the immediate community. Some of them can walk to work. What he's done in that little store by far has surpassed anything I could have ever thought could come from it. And it's also surpassed what that little building can hold. He purchased the surrounding land from my uncle with the intention to be able to expand the store and what he's doing for the community there. So anyway, I just want to ask that you guys, you know, look at this and see what he has done, how helpful he is in the community. He's really become a family member to most of us out there. If you'll let the rezoning go through so he can continue to expand, I would appreciate it, as would hundreds of people that have signed a petition for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Our next speaker, I believe, is the applicant, Mr. Jamal Ascar of 2060 Blue Creek Road.
My name is Jamal Ascar, 2060 Blue Creek Road. I'm here the reason, just I'm trying to make, you know, help the community to make sure, serve everything, the food, grocery and gas, to make sure everybody, and I have to drive all the way to town, to make sure everything too close. And I appreciate it if you can help me out, just grow my business and for me and for my, everybody living around me. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ascar. Our next speaker is, I believe, Mr. Cindy Pereira of 119 MacArthur Drive, and I apologize if I butchered your last name.
Yeah, good. I chicken scratched on there. Cindy Pereira, 14 MacArthur Drive in Jacksonville. Although I don't live in the community where the store is located, we are good friends with Mr. Ascar and his family. He has been a huge asset to the community through COVID, through the members of that community directly. He has nothing but good intentions to grow his business and expand, to offer more to those that cannot necessarily drive to the store that's a little bit of a distance. They can walk to the store as the previous person mentioned. But he is, he's a true asset to the community, a good friend and good intentions is all he has. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Pereira. And our next speaker is Ms. Mary Zimmerman of 113 Rising Sun Lane.
Hi, my name is Mary Zimmerman. I'm not against the store, I'm against the gas station that he wants to build. The road is again, the road is too small for a big gas station to be built on the road. Blue Creek Road cannot handle a big gas station. There's too many accidents on Blue Creek Road as it is. There's too much, there's a, right across from the store, there is a, I'm sorry, I'm nervous, forgive me, there is a trailer park. The kids will take and run across the trailer, run across the road to get to his store. I've seen too many almost get hit. If he puts a big gas station, you're going to have the big trucks and everything else to get hit. You will see small children get hit, even adults, they take and run, try to, almost get hit by the vehicles. It's caused too many accidents. Right now, Blue Creek Road is being beat and battered. And right now, if you put your gas, if you put the big gas stations or the big gas station, you have big gas trucks going down that road too often. And my grandpa also had that store built. I've lived there all my life, right next to it. And right now, there is so much going on at that store, it's unbelievable. The cops are there all the time and they're watching that store for things happening. And if bigger the store gets, more things are going to be watched out for. The cops have too much going on to be at that store 24/7. They need to have, they need, you would need the cops for other things than be watching that store. There's been amylamses there for overdoses and everything else. We don't need stuff like that. I don't need my child being taken, watching stuff like that. I don't need my child have to take him, be scared of him going to my mom's house and taking worry about a vehicle taking, running across, almost hitting him and stuff because we live right next door to the store. It's too dangerous. And I am against it. The small store, I'm for. I'm for the store my grandpa built. But I'm against taking, making it bigger. I don't live in the city. If I want to live in the city, I would move to the city. Other people wants it, put it in your yard. Take and move the store there. I don't want the store, a big store, a gas station in my yard. Thank you right now. I hope and pray that y'all taking, making the right decision because if you want a store in your yard, please put it there, not in my yard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Zimmerman.
Also, I'm sorry, I have a letter. My brother couldn't be here, so I have a letter to give it to.
If you could give that to the clerk or to our assistant county manager. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Zimmerman. The final person signed up to speak tonight, I believe the name is Ms. Maglin Lanier, 2874 Blue Creek Road.
I'm here because I live at 274 Blue Creek Road and the store is just a driveway across from my house. And we do not need any more traffic or anything and there's water standing all over the place anyways. And it's a mess on Blue Creek Road. If you've never been there, never lived there, you don't know what it is. But I've been there all my life. It was my dad's farm and I cannot see putting a bigger store. There's help, help people get to town when they need help and there's other things that we do not need in our yards. And I don't have anything against the store being there that's there now, but I do not want anything any bigger. I do not buy anything from the store. I don't have anything to do with the people, but I don't have anything against them, but I just do not want a bigger place in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lanier. I'll make one quick call to the audience if there's anyone else that wants to speak specifically about this. Mr. Pierce? Pierce will be our last speaker on this item.
I'm really, I'm John Pierce, 45, Johnson Boulevard. I live in the community and actually down Blue Creek Road at one time, there was at least three places you could stop and get gas. And I do visit the store occasionally, we stop by to get a soda or whatever, and he does a neat job. And there may be a law all the time, but my going and coming on Blue Creek Road, I've never seen that be a problem to just, to me. But anyhow, I'm just addressing that before the commissioners. But I will say, his little store's been a service to the community. And to be honest with you, I've never been in there when it wasn't clean and it wasn't properly weighted on and he keeps it nice. And instead of having to drive all the way to Jysbun to get gas or to Southwest to get gas, it would be convenient to have something in the neighborhood. And like I said, one time, that area was about three or four places you could get gas in the three or four mile radius. And you know, as I know, most all the country stores are gone away with. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll close the public hearing on the Ascar Mohammed rezoning, and it is now available for commissioner discussion.
I got a question.
Need to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the rezoning.
Second. Motion and a second discussion.
Oh, can I speak now?
You can speak now. Although I do need, I think, Mr. Jamal, you had something in your hand. Was that something you wanted to give to the clerk? If you don't mind just giving that to Ms. Wond. And then we've got the letter from Mr. Lanier as well.
The commissioners, do they have to be the ones that signed that? Is that you? Do you have a hand over there?
I'm sorry, I can't. Ms. Zimmerman, I'm sorry. We'll just take it and take a look at it for you. Commissioner Knapp.
Thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome.
One question I have is why did our planning board turn it down? I mean, I've asked one of our people and they couldn't tell me, I mean, why do they, I just want to hear your rationale.
Vice Chairman, unfortunately, I'm not a planning board member and I don't know what goes through their rationale when they make their decisions. All we did in our staff report and in the presentation was list some of the concerns that were spoken by the citizens that we heard. So.
Nonetheless, that was a good answer. Very well placed. Very well played.
Any other questions before he leaves?
No. The, the way I look at it, you know, looking at these pictures, and I understand your concerns, but I also understand that, to me, it's obvious you're providing a service to that community. And I'm, I'm gonna tend to agree with Mr. Pierce on there, the Blue Creek traffic. I don't think it's that bad, but I applaud the fact that you're, you took the business over and you, you did well with it, and now you're trying to expand it. I think you're gonna provide a service to the community there with a gas station. It doesn't matter where you put the gas station up, anywhere in this town, whether it's Southwest or whether it's near Maple Hill, or whatever it might be. Being a former cop, we're always gonna look at those. It doesn't really matter where it is. Okay? Just plain and simple. We're gonna look at convenience stores, and if we get information, we're gonna do surveillance on them, whatever. But I think you're providing a good service, and, and, and by the looks of it, I think, you know, if there's limited facilities to get gasoline, I think this is a, a perfect, perfect opportunity to have one right there in the community. So, that's all I have to say.
Mr. Metcalf, I'll call you that, since it's, you know, Carter's too familiar. My understanding with these consistency statements that the Planning and Development Board give us really has to do with how it relates to the zoning suggestions. Is that correct? It's not necessarily they're for or against it, they're just looking at it as far as what it, what zoning is being changed, and how it might affect the plan, or how it relates to the plan, rather than they're for it or against it. Am I wrong?
So, there's two pieces to their recommendation. So, the first piece is the motion, the same thing y'all do, is there's a motion for approval and a motion for denial.
Okay.
And so, they did a motion for denial. And then the second piece of that planned consistency statement is looking into, as you were saying, Commissioner Carpenter, you know, is it consistent with the plan or not? Is it reasonable or not? Is it in the public interest or not? And so, it's really both and for, for that situation.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
I don't know how I missed that.
Any other questions? Just want to know, we talked about traffic coming on, on, on Blue Creek Road with the larger trucks and everything. Is Janey, I don't think it's Janey salvage, Janey Moore, I think it's Foss now, is it still in operation there with, with the traffic from that? Okay, I just wanted to make sure if that was still, still operational. So, any further discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Motion to approve the rezoning is approved.
Thank you. Chairman Foster and Commissioners, our final.
Ms. Griffin, we have had a request for a quick recess before we get into this last one. I'm sorry. I apologize. If we'll take a ten minute.
Five.
Five.
About seven and a half.
We'll take a quick five minute, five minute recess.
Greater sixty-five point thirteen acre tract. Existing uses in this area is agriculture. There's also a portion of the tract is a golf course. There's some storage of material and just some of the property is vacant. Two on Wassa water mains, one on Gum Branch, that's fourteen inches. One on Roadstown, that is eight inches. And then a ten inch on Wassa sewer main on Gum Branch. The Half Moon Fire Department serves this area in its ISO rating of five. So when we get into traffic, Roadstown Road in 2018 had an annual average daily trip count of four thousand nine hundred under our estimated capacity of thirteen thousand. While Gum Branch in 2016 had a trip count of seventeen thousand and our estimates of a capacity of thirteen thousand. So this is the zoning map. Here, within the crosshatched area is the subject area of the rezoning. And so it's that fringe there along Gum Branch breaks and then goes over to the side. The light blue is that community business. The pink is the R fifteen. And so you can see there, the rest of the red area goes into Rock Creek because that is the rest of the sixty-five acre tract. But again, it's just that twelve point thirty-three acres there along that front edge. So to compare the districts, R fifteen, right, is accommodate moderate density, single family and suburban areas that have access to adequate utility and transportation infrastructure, the minimum lot size of fifteen thousand. Community business, no minimum lot size and is to accommodate the establishment of small-scale retail that serves that nearby neighborhoods and rural communities. It can accommodate multifamily up to ten units an acre. Now comparatively to highway business, there's no minimum lot size. And this purpose is to accommodate regional scale commercial uses and foster economic development along our major highway corridors where there's sufficient transportation and utility infrastructure. Highway business also allows multifamily as well and up to twenty units an acre. And as well, within these districts, there's a variety of uses, some of which are listed in your staff reports. And so you can see some of the changes between CB and highway business. There's a greater intensity of commercial uses. But as you know, whenever we approve a rezoning, you have to approve all the uses in that district. Comprehensive plan outlines two categories. The majority of the property is medium-density residential, accommodates for medium-density single-family and planned multifamily with limited commercial. And then there's a node that focuses on the Roadstown Gum Branch intersection. And we'll look at it in a map in a minute. It's the Local Commercial Activity Center or LCAC. And it's designed to accommodate a mix of uses and can serve as a focal point for local community activities. But again, I want to make sure there's infrastructure to support that. So here in the map, see that, you know, medium blue is that medium-density residential and that green is that LCAC designed to serve as a focal point for the community and for retail and commercial activity. This can be viewed as reasonable because it's partially within the LCAC and it's adjacent to a commercial use. There's a gas station there right at the corner. If you're driving by, you've probably have seen it. And has access to a water and sewer force main of considerable size. So there's also three policies in the comprehensive plan that would support the rezoning. The proposed rezoning may be considered unreasonable because there's not a transition between the commercial and the residential development. Our comprehensive plan calls for office and institutional to help transition and create a buffer between high-intensity commercial uses and residential developments. And additionally, traffic counts indicate Gum Branch is over capacity at this time. And there'd be three comprehensive plan policies that would not support the rezoning. June first is when this went before the Onslow County Planning Board. It was unanimously voted to not recommend approval. And there were seventeen citizens that came and spoke against the rezoning, none for the rezoning. Their concerns range from an increased traffic produced by the commercial use, safety of school-aged children being attracted to a commercial development coming from Stateside Elementary, environmental and drainage concerns relative to stormwater, light and noise pollution created from additional commercial development, and generally that sprawl is moving into the rural portions of our county. Look at the property from this aerial. So you can see there along the main stretch of the subject areas along Gum Branch, it's currently a field. And then you can see the gas station and then the portion along Roadstown, they're storing some commercial material and there's also a stormwater pond. And you can see where Rock Creek is there relative to the subject area. In this picture, your back is to Stateside and you're standing at Gum Branch. And there's the field and then the gas station there on the corner. And so then Rock Creek would be behind those row of, you can see those tall pine trees. Now we're going to look at it from the other perspective. Now you've turned the corner, you're on Roadstown, behind you is Howard Farm, right? And so Rock Creek is there behind those trees and also to your left. And then you have the gas station to your right. And this is where they're storing some commercial material onsite. So the proposal is respectfully requested for the board to consider adopting consistency statement and to whether approve or deny the rezoning and authorize the commissioner to sign all documents.
Thank you, Mr. Metcalf. At this time, I'll open the public hearing on the Morton and Morton rezoning, P R E Z twenty twenty-three dash fifteen. We do have five citizens who have signed up to speak this evening. Our first speaker, Mr. Phil Gold of three oh six Daisy Court.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you. I wish I was a little later. I'd been later down the list. I wouldn't have been first on this one. I do, I stand before you to, I come in objection to the rezoning for this particular item. One thing I'd like to bring up too is, first of all, I came to Onslow County in nineteen ninety-one via the Marine Corps. I've been here for thirty-two years in the same house. I love my neighborhood. I still love my neighborhood. It's been through a lot of changes, a lot of growth, but I absolutely love it. I raised a son there who's got a lot of fond memories. He's now away in the Marine Corps. But that is a community that we absolutely love. We moved there because it was four miles from Richlands and four miles from Jacksonville. If I wanted to live around a lot of businesses, I would have moved in those areas. But we were, we're beginning to see the encroachment. One thing I want to bring up on the slide is when we were here for the public hearing during the, um, yeah, the board for rezoning and stuff, the property owner, NOR his representative, was here at the time. So we had no question. We could not ask them questions at that time. But one thing you just said on the thing is that it was unanimously voted not to recommend the rezoning. And I have a concern, I was going to wait till later, but I have a concern with this whole issue because it wasn't in fact, unless something happened afterwards, at the time of the voting, it was six to one. The one person that was for the rezoning is Mr. Howard, who owns, you saw in the picture, the Howard Farms right on the other side, who serves on a board with the developer, Mr. Pierce at Jones Onslow. My opinion, there's a lot of money to be made here and I think it's a very serious conflict of interest to the public. Because there's a lot of people out here that feel this is a done deal no matter what. And that's why. And when I saw that, it was unanimous, I don't know what happened, but it was not. It was six to seven. They have already, like you said, it was mixed, it's mixed zoned. We have one small area that's a business already. That's already impacted. It's a business that's right at the entrance to Rock Creek, which at times affects the traffic pattern. It affects that whole field. We used to watch people play soccer. Now we watch tents because they're selling goods sometimes. And that, that is not the community. And why would we go from R fifteen straight to business, highway business? It's not a highway. It's a road that's over capacity already. So why would we jump from that? We have no idea. We were told that there's not necessarily anything planned to be built there. Well, somebody's planning something because you don't cut out a spot like that, it looks like a shape of a strip mall to me. You don't cut those out with no plans in sight. And I don't understand why we would give somebody permission to build anything they want before we know what it, what they want to build. We should have those rights. Inside your own documentation, and it states, R fifteen, like he stated up there, it's for dwelling units and single-family residential. But at the bottom of R fifteen, it says, "This district is further intended to protect neighborhoods from encroachment by incompatible uses and development patterns." Highway business, as it states, is accommodate regional scale commercial uses. Now, we already argue the fact that it's already split zoned. So some of them want to say, well, it's already zoned this way. You know, what's the difference? Well, it's very important to us, to the homeowners in that area and all the safety issues that were already addressed. Five minutes is just not enough, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Our next speaker is Mr. Harold Morton of three hundred Country Club Boulevard.
Thank you for having this hearing. Thank you commissioners for what you do. And I'll start off by saying, we've been developing Rock Creek for fifty years. We have everything we have done so far we planned fifty years ago. Now we did, when, when the planners laid out Rock Creek, they, they planned for the commercial area to be at the entrance to Rock Creek, which is a highway business, highway business. That's the way it was zoned. When we decided and that the people really had rather not have the entrance to, coming into Rock Creek, be a business section. So we moved down the corner and we developed, I think there's nine acres of it, but it said twelve, but it's nine acres, I think, that we got zoned. We thought we got in a zone highway business. But when it came out and we put, we put the hand, or we had the hand bar sold to them, we had many people wanting that corner. But we would not let it go until we had a company that was going to put a business there that would be an asset to Rock Creek. So we got one, Handymarks, a very, very nice store with good, good products and so we, but then we had another company that wanted to put a, a good business. But business, the business we have only allows ten thousand feet. With this business, they wanted ten thousand five hundred. And they wouldn't budge. They know if the people didn't want, didn't want the business there, they, you know, they, they had plenty of places to go. So we went before the, I didn't go to the planning board. I forgot it, that, that even something so simple, asking, change it from business to highway business to me was, you know, it was just a matter of doing it. Well, we then, we have a lot of people, I think they really don't understand what's going on. We're not wanting to put, we're not wanting to put high-rise apartments there. That's not what we developed Rock Creek for. We didn't spend millions of dollars out there to put a ghetto or, and the people living there know that what we have tried to do to make it a place that's pleasant, open, nice, and we got a good, we got a good filling station there for the community. And I think most of the people are happy with it. Well, we have another business that is a really, really good business, which will put at least a half million dollars on the tax board. So it's, it's just a plus for everybody. I can't even imagine, I can't even imagine the people in Rock Creek not wanting a fine business sitting there beside the, the, the hand bar. Now, now we, we don't plan to put no high-rise apartments in. That's what everybody thinks. We're not about that. You know, and I sat on the planning board for thirteen years and I had, we had many people come and say, now, we came to Onslow County, weren't many people here. And we don't want nobody else to come. So we don't approve this, we don't want them more. Well, that's not the way life is. And we don't get roads until we have the people. We don't get the road and then the people come. That's not the way it is. So, but Gum Branch is getting to be improved. They're working on it and it looks like it's kind of slow, but it's a couple of three years, we're going to get a little better, be a little better. We, we have strived that everything we did, we tried to make Rock Creek better for all of the people. And that's what we expect to continue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Our next speaker, who has signed up, is Mr. John Pierce.
John Pierce, four oh five Johnson Boulevard. I'd like to address a few things that, in addition to what Mr. Morton, but I really do think, one of the concerns was his buffering. Behind this area is a minimum of a hundred yards, which is three hundred foot buffer, and most areas more like five hundred foot. As an existing fairway that's dedicated as green space to golf course. So it's not like we're infringing right on top of the residential development. There is a great buffer. And to be honest with you, there is traffic on Gum Branch Road and honestly, it's not an ideal residential area to build just single-family residential on Gum Branch Road with the amount of traffic that's there and the noise that would be leveled due to the traffic. But having said that, I know in a perfect utopia, you start out with highway business, then you start out with O and I, then you go to single-family. Well, we've got a fairway, which I think would, would remedy for as far as the, having the O and I area, or the three hundred foot golf course that's there, and this plan's going to be there. Besides being a tax-based, increase the tax base, it is being built along, I consider Gum Branch Road is a, a commercial corridor. Actually, we're developing an area just about three, two miles north of this area towards Richlands. And we had to mitigate, we had to put turn lanes in and there's, you're going to see those things. And what we've done is set an area aside, knowing that it's going to have to be some widening that has to be done on Gum Branch Road. It would accommodate the widening. So we're taking that into account and that's why I cut off the area as far as I did and just asking for that. And Mr. Morton was correct. The initial plan and the zone on the entrance is highway business. And I think if you put businesses there, which you could, it's a much better area down at this end and it would be less impact on the citizens there to build it along this area instead of the main entrance to, to Rock Creek. And there is a customer out there that's wanting to build and it requires ten thousand five hundred square feet. We got one in our area, Sneeze Ferry, where we stay in the summertime. And we call it the Sneeze Ferry Walmart. Because we go there to get anything you want to instead of going a great big long distance. If you want to go get vinegar, you want to go get whatever, it serves a need and it really truly is an asset to the community. And like I just mentioned, we have a sufficient buffer with that. And I think, in my opinion, this is the highest and best use for his property and not single-family whatsoever. And I'll be here later on if, if the board has any other questions that they wanted to ask of me.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Our next speaker is Mr. Mark Hollahan of one oh eight Kimberly Court.
Good evening. Mark Hollahan from one oh eight Kimberly Court. Thank you for the opportunity to come up here and speak to you. I just had a couple of things I, I wanted to address about this. I, I attended the planning board meeting when apparently over seventeen speakers' residents came and spoke, excuse me, came and spoke in opposition of the, of the zoning. And, and, and most of the, most of the things have been addressed. I wanted to echo something Mr. Gault talked about, which is really the definitions. When we talk about, we've already got commercial, commercial business right up there. And, and the addition of the gas station was a good thing. That's a small business that serves the community, that serves the nearby neighborhoods, which is part of the definition of, of commercial business, Mr. Metcalf's slide. And, but highway business, a, a good deal business, and, and everybody loves the, the promise of tax, tax income. That's great. However, if you live on Rock Creek, if you live in Rock Creek, if you live off and commuting in that area of Gum Branch, as stated, traffic is, traffic is over capacity. And, and there's some road projects going on that are going to mitigate that to a degree. But Gum Branch Road, when it picks up its third, its center turn lane, is not going to become a major highway corridor. It's a pretty large, pretty important county connector, but it's not a major highway. It's not going to be, at least not in, not in the plans I've seen. Not a three-lane, three-lane road is not a highway. The traffic's not going to support that. The, the light pollution, the, the impact on the, on the, the neighborhood, when I moved into, to Kimberly Court in two thousand and six, there were significant trees. We had what was, what you would really call a buffer. You didn't know Roadstown Road was behind you. You didn't know that Gum Branch was right over there. It was like an island. And all those trees are gone. And they've turned, some of them have turned into, into a very nice residential area, Holly Grove, off of, off of Roadstown Road, really a nice area. But the ones up front were just cut. And, and the houses that are, that butt up against the gas station, what was a quiet and peaceful area, they now have twenty-four, twenty-four seven area lights in their backyard. They have trucks that sit all night long resting in, or truck stop basically resting in this gas station. It's a good addition, but that comes with a price to the, to the community. The addition of a highway business, a business structure up to sixty thousand square feet on that road isn't necessarily a good deal for the residents of that area. That's not serving the local community. That's regional, commercial, commercial structure. So I'd ask you to, to, to listen to the residents, listen to the, the residents of Onslow County who are telling you that growth is good. I support what Mr. Knapp says, you know, growth is good. Careful growth is better. I don't know. And no one has ever heard what the good deal businesses are. So the promise of, it's a business and you're going to like it. Well, not necessarily in my backyard. A ten thousand plus square foot facility, several hundred feet from where I live, is not necessarily the best deal in the world. Because there is no buffer. A golf fairway is not a buffer. A line of trees is a buffer. Because a fairway doesn't block light, a fairway doesn't block sound, a fairway doesn't block any of the, doesn't block me seeing this large building where I once saw green stuff. So I'd ask you to, to, to please consider opposing this, taking the recommendation to the planning board. This is an area that doesn't need giant regional commercial facility. We need stuff that supports the neighborhoods. That's CB, not HB. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollahan. Our next speaker, who has signed up, is Mr. David Knight of four thirteen Falls Creek Court.
Good evening. I appreciate the, the time. I mean, I, as it stands, I mean, I'm against it as well. I live in Rock Creek. I'm not real close to where that is. I'm actually in the back part of the neighborhood. I'm four thirteen Falls Creek, if I didn't say that, sorry. And flooding is probably the main thing that in, I think would be a big concern of mine. In my backyard, it goes up against a stream, which my understanding is pretty much where all of the drainage goes through in that Rock Creek area. When we have significant rain, that fills up into my backyard, up to where we have some lawn area and then a good third of my backyard probably goes up against that creek. I mean, Hurricane Florence, I know that my house flooded twelve inches and I know that that's a rare occurrence, that doesn't happen frequently. But if we had a highway business that could significantly increase water in that area without making sure that the capacity to handle that water is taken care of, I see that as a huge concern. And I know that at the last meeting, there were multiple other people that expressed that they've had issues of flooding in their front yards and other spaces as well. So from my observation, that's probably not ready for that kind of a business, even if it ever was to be a good business in this neighborhood. Additionally, on the same note, it was just mentioned in this meeting on another case that when you remove the trees, that that has a negative effect on the water of being able to drain it. Commissioner Carpenter made that comment. Well, what they've done in recent years, particularly in the back nine of that golf course, is removed virtually all the trees. It's, I mean, and it's, it used to be heavily covered when you were back there and now there's nearly, there's almost no trees at all. And so to me, that's besides the buffer not being there for the other reasons, but it seems like that in itself is another risk of being able to handle the water and potential flooding. I have young children and so, you know, the overcapacity of Gum Branch is also a concern for me. When we're transporting, the accidents in that area from all observations of the community have increased. And although there are, my understanding is there are plans to improve Gum Branch, but that's years in the making and that the only immediate one is to add a middle lane, which it seems probably won't really be a sufficient remedy, you know, for Gum Branch's current capacity. But those are the concerns that I have and I appreciate the time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Knight. I'll make one final call to the audience if anyone would like to come forward. Yes, sir?
Yep, thank you.
My name's Lee Bonner. I live at one nineteen Birdie Court. And I'm going to start out with just a few observations because I was at the other planning board meeting. And did any of the county commissioners get the minutes from that meeting to be able to review prior to us coming here tonight?
They can answer that once they are able to have conversation about it when we close the public hearing, sir.
Okay. Because when they ended it, they talked about the, the findings from the board was going to be presented and that when we had this meeting tonight, that they were going to be aware of what all the findings were and what we discussed. And then I heard tonight that it wasn't. So I was concerned about that. As a, as a citizen, that does concern me very much. And I am opposed to this. And that was really one of the facts that I, that I'm concerned about. Because it seems like this is more about money than it is about people. And then, and, and as a citizen of Onslow County, I've never felt that before. Ever. And that's why I chose to be a citizen of North Carolina and to retire here. Served my country for thirty-three years and I could have moved anywhere in the United States of America and I chose here. And I've heard some things during this meeting tonight that was, that actually been shocking in regards to being heard that it was a unanimous vote, but it really wasn't. Being told that you were going to receive information that, that you didn't. Having finding out that, you know, there's supposed to be safety precautions put in in regards to drainage and, and, you know, against flooding and things like that, that really, well, you know, the state has to do this first or it has to get proposed to the state first. Well, we have to get it in first before the state will make a decision. So we have to put people's health at risk prior to then putting in the proper safety measures? This isn't the kind of, this isn't, this isn't the quality of care that, that I'm used to from my elected officials in Onslow County in here. I'm, I'm, I'm actually shocked as, as I've sat here tonight. I'm actually shocked as I've sat here tonight and listened about some of these points. Concerned about the flooding, concerned about the accidents with the kids and the school buses, the intersections. I'm concerned about their health and welfare. I'm concerned about our health and welfare in the community in regards to the weather and the flooding. I'm not saying that I'm against growth in this county and in this state and in this wonderful community, but it has to be done right. It needs to be done properly, and it needs to be done safely. And that's why I moved here. And that's, that's why I'm here, my moral compass, to talk to you. That's what I'm here about. I'm not here about money. I'm not here about putting the cart before the horse. Talking about our future and making sure it's safe for everybody, and that we do the right thing, because we're supposed to do the right thing, right? Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll close the public hearing, unless Chairman Foster would like for me to extend it. Would you like for me to extend it beyond those that have signed up for two more speakers? Chairman?
We can. Are we going to be against it? So I think...
...about school.
Okay, come on up then.
Okay, we will. Ma'am, if you'll come up and give your name and address, please.
Hello, good evening. My name is Megan Cullowick. I live at 314 Holly Grove Court West. That is the subdivision that is off to the side of Rock Creek, so we are Holly Grove of Rock Creek. We sit behind the gas station. One of the things is noise pollution. There are constant, constant traffic going on at that gas station. Trucks sitting there, idling, staying over the night, constant cars in and out doing that. You know, we didn't have the gas station there 10 years ago, and we did just fine. Now it's there, okay, great. Did anybody ask us? Not really. So the other thing is, the traffic on that road is very dangerous for our school buses. I have two children at that school, and I have seen school buses run those red lights to try to get our children home to us, because there is so much traffic on that road. And it is very scary to watch a school bus jet out there, because they can't get across, because they're trying to get our children home to us. The light pollution, there are huge spotlights there now, that you can see everything everywhere, where we were a small, quiet, closed-off area where we wanted to be. If we wanted to be in the city, we would have moved four miles down the road. If we wanted to be in Richlands, we would have gone down to Richlands. We picked where we picked, because it was small, it was quiet, and it was what we wanted. Nobody's asked us if we want, you know, good businesses here. We don't. That's why all of us are here. That's why all of us went to the planning building, meeting. It's just, you're taking our neighborhood, and you are just throwing so much at it when it's not ready for it. The roads are not ready for it, the people are not ready for it, and it's just not a good time for this. Again, the school buses jetting across the road at red lights, that's my biggest concern that I have seen multiple times. And, you know, bad on the school bus for doing that, but what other choice do they have when there's other people running red lights? And that traffic area is just horrendous there. So I don't think the noise pollution, we need any more business there. I don't think we need any more traffic on that road, and I don't think we need any more anything on that road until that road is done and fixed and says, "Okay, we can go to capacity now," because it's already overcapacity now. And I've lived in Onslow County for going on 15 years now, and I've seen nothing but just commercial growth just overpopulate this whole area. Mattress stores, cellphone stores, vape stores. We have enough. And I did send an email to the commissioners, and I thank you for those who did respond, but enough is enough. We have all of that in the city where people want to live. We are out of the city. You are encroaching on where we want to be, and you're bringing businesses to us that we did not ask for. Okay? This is a place that I love and a place that I call home, and I don't want my kids to be on fear when they go on the school bus if they've got to go across that intersection. It already takes, you know, two hours for my kids to get home on that bus because of all of the traffic. And I live directly across from the school. So it just, the area is not ready for this kind of building. And also, at that other meeting, it was unanimous, there's been some misinformation. You know, you've got board members sitting with board members, you've got hands in other people's pockets, money's exchanging hands. It's not a good business. This is, this is, this is really bad practice. And we're just, the residents and everybody in that area, we are just tired of it. So thank you for your time. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you so much. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing, and it is available for commissioner discussion.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second discussion.
I just want to say something. I'm going to address first some of the comments, and I'm going to tell you my viewpoint on where I stand on this. Mr. Bonner, your comments, first of all, sir, I've known you for a long time. I've got the deepest, utmost respect for you, sir. I know your son very well. Turned out to be a great, great young man, and I'm really happy for you. But you said some things here that triggered, it just only reinforced my thought process, anyway. When it comes to rezoning, you know, are we aware of the rezoning for commissioners? Yes, we are. We talk about it. We talk about it before the meeting, because we have to do our research and find out where we stand on this and what are some of the parameters. Each commissioner does their own individual contact and research on a rezoning issue. And I've said this many times before in the past, that rezoning issues are boring to a lot of people, but not to the commissioners, because it's important. That is our main function. That's what we, that's what we are elected to do, to do what we feel is right for the county. So I wanted to throw that out there for you, because for you to come to a meeting, and I know you, it takes a lot. And I really appreciate you, sir, and thank you for your service to the country, 30-plus years in the United States Marine Corps. I just want to say thank you, hurrah, and God bless you. The other thing, you know, we talk about Gum Branch Road, and I made it no secret that Gum Branch Road, I won't drive Gum Branch Road. If my wife drives Gum Branch Road, I call her. And if she gets on the other side of Richlands, she has to text me, because am I a worrywart? Absolutely. I've been in Onslow County for 33 years. I got here in 1990, and I was scared to death to drive Gum Branch Road back then, but it was the only way to get to town. And if you ever drive Gum Branch Road at night, coming back from traveling to another state at about 1:00 in the morning, it's pretty scary. You know, you don't know what you're going to hit, you don't know what's coming around the corner. But enough, I said enough on that. You know, there are a lot of reasons why people move to Onslow County. A lot of people moved to Rock Creek, because they wanted to get out of the city. They wanted to be out in a private area to enjoy their retirement, as you, Mr. Bonner, and others that I know that live out there that have retired. That's your choice. You moved out of the city for a reason, and there's no reason why we should move the city towards you, is my opinion. Okay? We talk about the congestion on Gum Branch Road, and I've said it many, many times in the past. We consider to are blue in the face and talk about the DOT is going to make recommendations and make improvements on Gum Branch Road, but that's what they said about Piney Green Road, and look how long that took. Piney Green Road was a disaster. I hated driving down that road. I'm glad it's open now, but it took years. They've been talking about that since I first came here, when I was transferred here in 1990. I'm a little concerned, too, about a 60,000-square-foot building. That's a big building. I know I used to work for a company that bought a 40,000-square-foot building, and they moved to Berga for their business. We were into tactical holsters, we were into firearms accessories, and they moved to Berga outside of the city, because they were anticipating delivery trucks and things like that. When I hear 60,000-square-foot building, the only thing I can think of is warehouse. Except for trucking. What is a 60,000-foot building? It's not going to be an office park. It's got to be something more. The traffic is already congested right now on Gum Branch Road. It's dangerous. We've got more people coming into the city, more people coming into Onslow County that are traversing Gum Branch Road, which means we're putting our kids in danger, our citizens in danger, because there are no immediate impact or concern to repair that road. Putting a middle lane, whatever it is, a three-lane thing, does absolutely nothing. Probably caused more accidents. And again, like you said, or that I said earlier, I don't know where the gentleman went, but, you know, I believe in growth. And some of you are probably saying, "No, you don't." And yes, I do. But cautious growth, and cautious growth requires responsibility. And as a commissioner, it's my responsibility to look after the safeguard of the citizens of this county. And I'll say it over and over again, Gum Branch Road is a dangerous road. And recently, with the influx of residential areas, the increase in population, the increase, the need to build more schools out in that area, that means more kids, more people trying to get on Gum Branch to get in town, because they can't go all the way to Richlands and hook a left and get on 258 to catch the bypass. It's way out of their way, and it takes too much time. So it's the obvious choice, Gum Branch. Now, do we need new businesses and expansions in Onslow County? Absolutely, but not there. And I respect the fact, I've answered, I've read 17 emails from, well, actually a little more than that, from constituents. I tried to answer every one of them, but I couldn't. I mean, because you kept saying the same thing, and I agreed with you after reading them. And for those that I answered the emails, thank you for taking the time. You took the time, because obviously you're concerned citizens of that particular neighborhood. Rock Creek is a very nice area. But keep in mind, it's for the citizens that wanted to live, like you said. You could have lived anywhere in the United States, me too. But I chose to stay here when I retired, like you. And my feeling is, with all the things that we have that are dangerous on that particular road, to add an additional 50,000, 60,000-square-foot business practice, to me, is not reasonable, because it jeopardizes what we have out there currently that we're trying to fix. And so with that, and I have my, you know, I have my personal reasons because of that, and I respect all of you that came out and spoke. I respect your opinion. And I'll go back to what I said earlier. You moved out of the city for a reason. There's no reason for us to move the city to you. And so I'm going to be voting against this zoning issue, and I just wanted to speak how I felt. If I upset some people, well, that's part of the job, right? So thank you very much, and I'm done.
I really, I don't understand the logic here, guys. You've got highway business at the entrance to Rock Creek. You've got highway business on another corner at that same intersection. You're going to get developed. And it just makes more sense to work with a developer who wants to work with the community and wants to do what's best for the community out there than to chase him off or force him into building something at the entrance to Rock Creek, which would probably be much more detrimental to the community than working on that corner. It's already zoned, commercial business or community business. He can develop something else there, if, whether we change the zoning or not. So I just, I don't understand why you wouldn't want to work with somebody who wants to work
Mr. Morton has been around a long time. He has developed, his family has developed this property from the get-go. I know him, and I respect him for what he's trying to do. You heard him testify today, tonight, that it's been 50 years in the making, and I believe every bit of it. If he tells you that he's going to do something, the man's going to do it. I truly believe if we pass this up, there's going to be something else there, you know? And I honestly wish him the best. His family has done a lot for this county, and they continue to do a lot. And I'm in favor of this project. Thank you.
Just to go on the record, these rezonings have weighed really heavily on me since we got our book. And I think since I came into office, one of the big things that I was looking at was the fact that we have out-of-control growth here going on in Onslow County, and the fact that the comprehensive plan is out of date has been really a concern to me, and I'm glad that we're moving along well on that in our department right now. I had half a mind to just vote no on every single thing that came up, just because I feel like we need to put a pause. Growth is great. I'm all for it. I'm all for big businesses coming here and reducing the tax base so that the homeowners can get a break, or the taxpayers can get a break. However, I also want to be really smart about where things go, and I feel like if there was a way for us to put a pause on everything that's going on and get that plan done, that it might give the rest of us, or me in particular, just a peace of mind in blessing or, you know, turning away these proposals that are coming up. So I probably am not going to be in favor of this either, just because I don't feel right about it right now. I know it may very well be developed, the way that Commissioner Bennett was saying, but I can't move forward knowing that it is impacting this many people, and just, it's not right for me.
Any further discussion?
The thing for me is, those traffic numbers, if I remember correctly, were 2016, and we were 4,000 trips over already in 2016. It's seven years later, and we say, "Let's make the problem worse so it can eventually get better." That doesn't make sense to me. And so for me, that's the reason I will be voting against this.
I think, Mr. Bonner, you asked a question about what information we received from the minutes or whatever from the meetings. We do get an extensive list for each one of these rezonings, from the existing site conditions, the current proposed districts that are there, the adopted plans, the growth trends. So we get a lot of that information that was probably shared during the planning board hearing as well. So we get a lot of the information that comes to us. And then for you as citizens, the public hearing is opened up for you to come in and share your thoughts and on that. Couple of things that I do want to say is that these decisions are not predetermined before we walk in the door. That's not what's going on. And that, I hope that is not something that is perceived. If it is, it should not be that way. And the other thing is, is the folks that come to us and share their development ideas and the things that they're wanting to do, Onslow County is much larger now than what it was, but we do have a lot of people that are in business and do a lot of things, are involved in a lot of things. And the folks that are typically involved, business transactions of this nature are not going to make or break the individuals involved. I can assure you that one's not looking out for the other because of the businesses that they're in, because of what they do and what they've done. But the public hearings are extremely important for everyone to come in and share their thoughts and their opinions on that. And it is very important to hear the things. A lot of people, I am glad that you have discovered Onslow County and have decided to retire here, once you have left the military, Marine Corps, Navy, or NCIS, or whoever you're a part of, and we appreciate your service and what you've done. I've been here all my life, so I love the county and the growth. You know, growing up, it'd take me 20 minutes to get on Topsail Beach. Now, if you go Saturday morning at 9:00, it's going to take you an hour just to get over the bridge. And the growth out there is extensive. I'm not sure if a moratorium on any of this is the answer. I don't know what the answer is. But one state, I think, if we remember, had a bridge or a road to nowhere, and whatever they thought was going to happen, didn't happen, and it's to nowhere. So North Carolina Department of Transportation is not going to build a road with anticipation of something happening. They're going to wait until it is packed to do it. I could be mistaken, but I think the bypass around Jacksonville was actually set up and said we needed in the 1960s. So it takes a long time. But I've talked enough of this. I do see issues out there, and I guess a question I would ask is, if it remained community or community business, and the building was 10,000 square feet, would that have an impact on the residents there? That would be a question that I would present to the... That would be a question that I would present to the folks that are here tonight. I don't know if there's a way around that. If whoever's coming in would go to 10,000 square feet, that might make a difference. Or, and forgive me for saying this, I may should have spoke to Mr. Metcalf or Ms. Griffin, maybe a special use permit of a 10,500 square foot building could be the answer. But I don't know if that's what the citizens want or not. They've got lots of concerns with the traffic and the conditions. And I will say, the biggest concern that was shared here tonight was school buses running red lights. That's something that needs to be picked up and called over to Onslow County Board of Education because I don't care how fast they want to get your child home, running a red light is not the answer. So that's something definitely need to contact them, and I would contact them tomorrow with the bus number that's involved. With that being said, no further discussion. All in favor of the motion to approve signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, signify like sign.
No.
No.
Motion fails. Thank you, Ms. Griffin.
Thank you. We'll move on.
Ladies and gentlemen, I appreciate your spontaneous reaction, but we cannot do that here, so we appreciate it. And we're getting ready to move on pretty quickly, but we're gonna take a two-minute break to let everybody get out of here, and then we're gonna go right back to business. We will call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order at this time. Ms. Griffin, we will continue with you with maybe things that are not so energetic.
Absolutely. We will move on to our general items at this time. Our first one, our final offers on real property. Ms. Christina Russell, our purchasing division head.
Commissioners, on May 1st of 2023, the Board of Commissioners accepted the following offers of the sale of surplus real property, and the properties are described as parcel 160353 and 028668, both located on Sylvester Street, 0.24 acres. Parcel 160353 came in at an initial offer of $4,075.50. The final offer came in at $5,006.15. Parcel 28668 came in at an initial offer of $4,075.50, and the final offer came in at $6,000. So as required by statute, the public notices were advertised in the Jacksonville Daily News, allowing other citizens to make upset offers, and the county did receive upset offers. So the final offers are being brought back to you for consideration. If the board approves the final offers, the properties will be sold as is, and deeds will be prepared to transferring those properties. The properties will then be removed from our county assets. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the final offers for the surplus real properties.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Our next item is amendment to section 4-23 of our Onslow County Animal Service Ordinance. Richard Gabbard is going to present this for us.
Good evening, Commissioners, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. Recent clarification from the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Customs Services Veterinary Division defines the implantation of microchips as a veterinary medical procedure that falls under the jurisdiction of the North Carolina Veterinary Medical Board, pursuant to the North Carolina Veterinary Practice Act and its associated rules. The NCVMB has a lot of very narrow exception for the associated rules, for, I'm sorry, for AMS, AWS Registered Animal Shelters to implant microchips in shelter-owned animals and place that activity under the North Carolina Department of Agriculture Animal Section. Employees of AWS Registered Shelter may only implant microchips in animals that are owned by the shelter. Employees may not implant microchips in animals that are suspected to be owned by the public or any stray that has any indication of ownership during the stray wait period. This includes owned animals impounded by the shelter for bike quarantine or any other reason. Employees may not impound microchips into animals that are being reclaimed by the public. In accordance with this information, Onslow County Animal Services Ordinance, section 4-23, section 2, requires clarification to state that to the extent allowed by law, every animal shall be microchipped prior to its release from animal services. It is respectfully requested that the Commissioners set a public hearing to amend Onslow County Animal Ordinance, section 4-232, at the August 7, 2003 Board of Commissioners meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
No move.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing none. Mr. Gabbard, you can't leave yet.
Yeah, you gotta stay up here.
I'm sorry.
Good job. There's a first for everything.
Yes, sir.
Standing at that microphone and presenting is not the easiest thing in the world, and you've got your first one out of the way. You did a great job, and we appreciate what you're doing as our new Animal Services Director. So congratulations, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
I just want to say one thing, too. The first time I met you, I went down to the animal shelter just to look for a puppy, okay? Because I'm that kind of guy. And I met you, and your staff was fantastic. I've been hearing great things about you. I'm happy you're here. I'm happy we have somebody that really cares about the citizens and the animals, because I'm an animal lover myself. So, well done. Good job.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is with our Director of Social Services, Ms. Susan Thigpen. It is our subsidized childcare services, local procedures and policies plan.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners. The plan is to be approved every other year by the Consolidated Human Services Board, and the plan outlines the set-aside allocation for funds for special-needs children, as well as prioritization of the waiting list, which we do not have a waiting list and have not for some time. I would respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners, as the Consolidated Human Services Board, approve the subsidized childcare services, local procedures, and policies plan for Onslow County, and authorize the Chairman to sign on behalf of the Consolidated Human Services Board.
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Thigpen. We now have Sheriff Chris Thomas to talk about the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program, DWI, grant.
Commissioners, Chairman, good evening. Chairman, I did shorten my distance to the mound today. I tried to get here a little faster than I did last time.
It was perfect.
You did well, sir.
From the bullpen, that was good.
In October 2018, Onslow County Sheriff's Office received a grant from the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program. The funds were utilized to establish and operate a full-time driving while impaired task force. Since initial funding, the Sheriff's Office has made substantial progress in the traffic safety throughout Onslow County. October 2023 begins the sixth federal fiscal year of the Driving While Impaired Unit. The grant was approved to continue the unit's operation with an award amount of $105,750 and a 75% match of $317,250. This is, the project totals $423,000. As of 2021, Onslow County averaged 5.8 alcohol-related fatalities, 5.6 alcohol-related fatal crashes, 17.2 alcohol-related serious injuries, 224.6 alcohol-related crashes as of 2017 and 2021 averages. Overall, Onslow County averages 22 fatalities from 2017 to 2021. As of May 2023, the Driving While Impaired Unit has completed over 15,262 traffic stops, resulting in over 22,038 charges, including 1,353 driving while impaired charges. I checked that number this morning, and it's actually 1,399 now. The unit has also charged 7,962 speeding offenses, 996 reckless driving offenses, 1,570 nonlicensed driver offenses. In addition to the traffic offenses, the Driving While Impaired Unit issued 214 drug-related charges, arrested 79 wounded individuals. The Driving While Impaired Unit has conducted 143 safety presentations, reaching over 29,823 individuals. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the grant and authorize the Chairman to sign the local government resolution, and the finance officer to sign an agreement of conditions on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, Sheriff, I have a question. Did we request that the North Carolina Highway Patrol increase, or the state legislature increase the number of highway patrolmen for our area? Have you talked to anybody at the state about that?
I have. I had a discussion two weeks ago with the lieutenant for this area. The Highway Patrol here in Onslow County currently is operating at half what they're authorized. Like most law enforcement agencies in North Carolina, they're struggling to hire individuals, and they are operating at roughly half here in Onslow County. Today, with the number of crashes we've had, that's what they did all day long. They did very little enforcement outside investigating crashes, and the Sheriff's Office does not investigate crashes.
I ask you that because the state has between, depends on who you talk to, between a $3 to $6 billion surplus. And I see it as the traditional role of the state Highway Patrol to patrol our highways, not for our Sheriff's Department to be doing that, so they can focus on breaking in entrances and drugs and all the other things that are happening in Onslow County that we need to address. So, in effect, what we are doing is subsidizing patrol of the county highways on behalf of the state. So the state has set up a grant program, which is kind of like set up based on like a drug dealer. The first one's free. We'll pay for everything the first year. Then they begin to scale it down to 80%, 50%, 25%, that kind of thing, until pretty soon we're subsidizing the state of North Carolina rather than them taking on their responsibility, which is to patrol the highways of the state. So philosophically, that's my concern with this, and I voted against it the first time it came out, and I understand it's a popular program with the people. People like it and that type of thing. But considering the fact that the board has now shifted their goals, and now we are saying that we need to spend $6 million on a pool, now we need to start looking for areas where we can reduce spending on other areas that the state can step up and perform the responsibility which they have, which is to patrol the highways of the state. And they've got the money to do it, $3 to $6 billion in surplus. So, you know, and as I looked at these numbers, it seemed like we got DWI charges over the past five years, 260 months, 1,353, that's about roughly six a week. But then the speeding charges, 7,962, that's about 30 and a half a week. So, you know, we're doing the Highway Patrol's job here in Onslow County. And I see, and I'm not critical of what you guys are doing. You're doing good stuff. I mean, I see you working that area from Verona to Dixon, pulling people, and they are speeding. They blow by me like I'm standing still. But the point being is, I think the state of North Carolina needs to take on their responsibilities and do what they're supposed to, especially since our board has shifted our priorities, and so that's why I express those concerns. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Are they state funds or are they federal funds that are?
There's some of both, actually. They do come from the state. But, you know, I don't know that I disagree with all that the Commissioner said, but I believe it should be holding for me as the sheriff to do everything I can to protect the citizens of Onslow County.
Absolutely. I agree with you. And the state right now, I could be wrong in my numbers, I am okay with someone will correct me, but there's anywhere from 150 to 250 openings in the state Highway Patrol currently. I'm not sure if those numbers are accurate or not, but those numbers of what I've heard.
That's pretty accurate.
That's pretty accurate.
It's pretty close. But Onslow is working at half-staffed.
Oh, yeah. They are.
I'm all about them getting full-staffed and doing what they're designated to do.
Absolutely. And to protect and serve, and I think that can be in many capacities, whether it's pulling somebody for speeding, DWI, road stops, whatever. But with the issues that we're facing and the money that's coming to us, the presentations, 143 safety presentations, reaching almost 30,000 individuals, there's numbers in there that we can't quantify because of those almost 30,000 people that received the presentation. We don't know how many received that and did not get behind the wheel and drive.
Yes, sir.
So we cannot quantify the number of lives that were saved as a result of that and the stops that were made in those traffic offenses. We really don't know how we can quantify that number because we don't know what could have happened 10 minutes later, whether it was a car with one individual in it or a van of a family headed on vacation that was involved in a DWI. Since we're gonna go swimming, I figure we might as well go swimming, and I don't know that because we make a decision to go one way, that I feel it's necessary that we go and look at holding somebody else's department accountable for that decision. So with that being said, and no further discussion, all in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign.
No.
Motion passes 6 to 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Our next item is with our grants manager, Ms. Jennifer Bumgarner, the North Carolina Appropriations Act grant.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners. I'm bringing to you today the North Carolina Appropriations Act grant. The North Carolina General Assembly recently awarded Onslow County Appropriations Grant in the amount of $50,000. The Boys and Girls Club of Southeastern North Carolina is the subrecipient of this grant. In accordance with the grant parameters, the county will use these funds to reimburse the Boys and Girls Club of Southeastern North Carolina for operational expenses related to serve in at least 750 youth in Onslow County through after-school programming and summer camps through June 30, 2024, or until funds are exhausted. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners accept the funds from the North Carolina Office of State Budget and Management for the purpose of the grant, and authorize the county's finance officer to execute the necessary documents on behalf of the county.
No move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bumgarner. The next two items are with Chrissy Hoover, Health Director. The first is management of chronic illness and pregnancy. The other is regarding the American Rescue Plan Act Regional Care Management Pilot Program.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman and Commissioners. The first item that we have
have tonight is an agreement addenda from the North Carolina Division of Public Health. The North Carolina Maternal Mortality Review Committee has identified that about 70% of pregnancy-related deaths are preventable, and that the majority of these deaths happen during pregnancy and the immediate postpartum period. Women are particularly vulnerable if they have chronic diseases like diabetes or hypertension, and therefore, funding has been allocated to make medically necessary monitoring equipment available to these women. Onslow County Health Department was awarded federal funds totaling $8,000 to buy medical supplies and the support and the management of these chronic conditions such as hypertension and diabetes during pregnancy, and the Onslow County Health Department will distribute these medical supplies to pregnant and postpartum women who are enrolled in the Health Department's maternal health services and who have no health insurance. These funds do not require any county match, and therefore, it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the acceptance of Agreement Addenda Number 130, Management of Chronic Illness and Pregnancy, federal funding in the amount of $8,000. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Continue on, Ms. Hoover.
Next item that we have is funding that comes from the American Rescue Plan Act. Region 8 is made up of nine counties in southeastern North Carolina. As part of this region, we were tasked with piloting a care management program throughout the region. As part of this project, funds were made available to purchase technology equipment to support Medicaid care management programs. Onslow County Health Department was awarded $27,110.52 as part of this program in the form of a grant to purchase technology equipment. They require no county match to accept these funds, and therefore, we respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners accept and approve the utilization of the ARPA Regional Care Management Pilot funding in the amount of $27,110.52 to purchase technology equipment in support of the care management programs.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final two general items before our appointments are with our Finance Officer, Andrew Prince, the Bear Creek Fire Station Replacement Project Ordinance and our Budget Amendments.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chairman and Commissioners. On November 21, 2022, the Board of Commissioners approved the reimbursement resolution, Bear Creek Fire Station Replacement, allowing the county to recover soft costs, including agriculture, engineering, and legal costs associated with the design of the construction of the facility. With the approval of the Board of Commissioners, the proposed capital project ordinance for the Bear Creek Fire Station replacement will be funded by general obligation bond proceeds from the county's debt capacity model with a planned borrowing date of spring 2024. The total project budget will be $5 million and will consist of capital outlay, construction, and design services. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the project ordinance for Bear Creek Fire Station Replacement and authorize the Chairman to sign on behalf of the county, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Go ahead, Ms. Prince.
I have four budget amendments for you this evening. The first is for senior services. Medicare Enrollment Assistance Program Catalog of Federal Domestic Assistance, or CFDA, 93.071, commonly referred to as MIPA, or the Medicare Improvements for Patients and Providers, are budgeted in advance of the state providing award totals. Expected grant revenue awarded to the county was less than expected by $1,689. Budget Amendment Number Two, at the March 6, 2023 Board of Commissioners meeting, 11,000, 11 million, 11.3 million was approved by the Board of Commissioners for the landfill Phase 5 expansion project. 7.25 million of ARPA revenue replacement funds have been allotted towards this project. The remaining 4.1 million will be transferred from the Solid Waste General Fund to the Solid Waste Construction Line. B3, Onslow County Care Management received ARPA grant funds from the Regional Care Management Pilot Program for the purchase of tech equipment to support the growing number of clients within the care management program. This totals $27,152 and was previously approved. Budget Amendment Number Four, Management of Chronic Illness and Pregnancy has awarded Onslow County Health Department with a one-time federal fund to buy medical supplies to support the management of hypertension and diabetes during the pregnancy and in postpartum period, and this totals $8,000, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Our next items, we have four appointments for the Board of Commissioners to consider. The first is via ballot. It's for the Onslow County Board of Adjustment. The Clerk's Office has received applications from Ms. Christina Asbury and from Mr. Brent Youngblood for the appointment on the Board of Adjustment in the stump sound category. Both expressed a willingness to serve and have submitted citizen participation applications, which are on file and have been certified by the Clerk. Via ballot, we do ask you to consider the appointment of either Ms. Asbury or Mr. Youngblood for the three-year term expiring January 31, 2026, in the stump sound category. Our next appointment is for the Onslow County Fire Rescue Commission. This, too, will be by ballot. The Onslow County Fire Chiefs of the volunteer fire departments met and nominated the following individuals for your consideration. For seat number one, either Adam Ketchum or Jerry Kip Williford. Seat number three, either Brandon Longo or Toby Thomas. The applications are on file and have been certified by the Clerk's Office. We do respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners consider appointing representatives to seat one and seat three for a two-year term expiring March 7, 2025. Seat number one will be Mr. Kip Williford. Our next appointment is for the Animal Services Advisory Committee. The following seats have terms that have expired. We have received applications from four individuals who are interested in serving on the committee, and each of these individuals has provided a citizen participation application for consideration that is on file and has been certified by the Clerk's Office. We respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners consider the appointment of the following individuals for a three-year term expiring May 16, 2026. Dr. Robert Shegog for seat number one, Ms. Toni O'Neil for seat number two, Ms. Victoria Brown for seat number three, and Ms. Susan Passy for seat number seven.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Our final item this evening is for a voting delegate for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners 116th Annual Conference. As you know, the NCACC holds an annual conference each year and requests that our board select one commissioner to serve as the voting delegate for that conference. We respectfully request that the Board of Commissioners select, at this time, one commissioner to serve as the voting delegate for the 116th Annual Conference.
Make a motion to nominate Commissioner Mark. Make a motion to nominate Commissioner Mark Price.
I'll second it.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Mark Price is the representative. Manager's comments now, I believe.
All I'm going to say this evening, because we have gone a little bit long, is Onslow County Senior Services and our local fire departments are distributing fans to those seniors over 60 years of age or with heat-sensitive disabilities who need a fan. Call 910-455-2747 if you need more information, and that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner comments. Commissioner Scott?
Good night, and we'll see you next time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Price?
Yeah, I just wanted to call attention to an article I read this week about Pender County. Said that Pender County was the third fastest-growing county in our state. He said, "Commissioner Price, why does that matter to us?" Well, they had $178 million in needs for their school construction. That required a 9 and 1/4 cent property tax increase. So, that's why it's so important that we have built up a fund balance so that we can get low interest rates, because it seems since I've been on the board anyway, about every two years, we've had to build a school, and a middle school's around, what, $48 million? So, a high school's even more than that. So, it's vital. That's why maybe I'm dogmatic about this, and some of y'all might think I'm a little extreme on this, and that's okay, because this is something that we have to do, and Pender County realized they had to do it, too, and it cost them 9 and 1/4 cent on their property tax increase. So, with that good news, have a good evening, and we'll see you next time.
Thank you, Commissioner Price. Commissioner Carpenter?
Last week, I attended the Airport Advisory Committee meeting on which I serve, and I have huge news that the environmental assessment has been completed and delivered, and they were blessed with a FONZI, which I love, acronyms you know, finding of no significant impact with the project, which means that there is a green light finally for the airport to start on design, new hangars, North Carolina 111 realignment, et cetera. That's great news for us. I also want to communicate that there is a plea for volunteers at the USO, both at the airport and on the base also. So, it can extend its hours and better serve our service members. So, for those of you who are interested in serving, that's a great way to be able to give back. Thank you very much, and have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter. Commissioner Bennett?
I've said enough for one night. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thanks, everybody, for being here. Have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Vice Chairman Knapp?
Real quick, Ms. Johnson, thank you for showing up. This is not our normal meeting. Last time we met was your first day, but welcome aboard to Onslow County. We look forward to working with you. I've heard many, many great things about you, and your credentials stand for themselves. And, Richard, you did a good job tonight. I'm still waiting for that picture of that little poodle, but I guess he's already gone, but that's okay. That's okay. And the only thing I want to say is, Chris, appreciate the hard work. Please pass on my regards to Lieutenant Marshburn for the outstanding work he does on the DWI Task Force. I mean, that's just the way it is. There's shortages all across law enforcement, especially North Carolina Highway Patrol. We had shortages with NCIS. We had to make do, and we tried to get money as anywhere we could to keep doing what we're doing. But I appreciate you, Chris. I know you need some manning. We'll talk about that, and I can do everything I can to get you extra manpower and resources for you, for the Sheriff's Office. And for all y'all, thank you for staying with us. It's been boring, but it's been fun. I'll see you next time.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Because we need a laughter with the FONZI news, with the FONZI news, I feel like there's going to be happy days out at the airport. Those of you that are too young to catch that, I appreciate you humor me by laughing at that. One thing I'll say is...
Motion to...
We lost a fine man and educator last week, Mr. Naes Brock Ridge. For me, it was Mr. Ridge. Served many years on the Onslow County Board of Education, principal of Richlands High School, teacher there, just a fine stellar cornerstone of the Richlands community and Onslow County as a whole. So, our condolences go out to Ms. Anne Ridge and their entire family, and to the community in general, because that was a, that's a big loss for someone that committed so much of his life to serving others. He has his own kids, but there's thousands that walk through the doors at Richlands High School that saw him in the same manner. So, condolences to them. With that being said, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We're adjourned.